Committees will be, you know showcasing what will be presenting during the convention and I'm handing over to the convener, Bindeesh Vaishya.
Pranam, Jai Janendra. I am Bindeesh Shah, convener of the twenty-second Bajana Convention. Every two years, for last forty years, China has brought celebration of our Jain heritage in North America.
Will be as a Jaina Convention.
This July, we are bringing convention to Lakeland, Florida for all of you to experience tropical welcome. As a team, convention board, plans for the convention. We have advisement of board who is providing us invaluable guidance and direction. As you can imagine, convention is a huge undertaking. Success of any convention is leadership, dedication and efforts of various committees. The leadership has assembled thirty committees with hundred-and-twenty-five-plus volunteers. We still need help. Please lend your helping hand in multiple ways, volunteer, sponsor, guide us. Please visit jainaconvention.org website to get detailed information about how you can help. Jaina volunteers are putting in enormous efforts and expertise to bring you a convention. We have gathered here today as a one team to showcase this convention to you. Our heartfelt thanks and appreciation to all the volunteers and their hard work. Now, as a convention convener, let me showcase you some of the highlights of what the convention team has planned for you at the convention. Our convention theme is to celebrate our birth as human aptly. Theme for the convention is maximize human potential, the Jain way. How can we leverage human body, intelligence and all the senses to achieve higher plateau according to Jainism? Also, how can we address modern issues using modern tools with Jain angle? You will find all of this at the convention. Now going over convention's schedule. We have planned exciting convention spanned over four days. Starting midday on Friday thirty June and ending on Monday third July. You'll be in Florida. The next day after the convention is fourth July. Everybody, we all celebrate. So extend your vacation in Florida and enjoy. Now taking you through our beautiful convention facility in the city of Lakeland that is between Orlando and Tampa. The facility is called RP Funding Center. All the activities will be held at this wonderful facility. Now taking you through some of the facility highlights. You can see here, everything is under single roof, having a huge arena as a main event stage. Concert quality theater, many breakout areas and definitely a temple. Now showcasing some travel logistics. Airports to consider if you are from out of state are main airports of Tampa and Orlando. There are multiple options to reach Lakeland from airport, Jaina shuttle service at nominal cost, Uber type service, rental cars or self-drive. We would encourage you to go to convention, jaina, jainaconvention.org website, look into about convention, check the transportation information and review the details. Take a travel survey on the website that will allow us to plan better. And website has a lot of information for you to check what is your preference to travel. For attendees with personal or rental vehicles, parking is free at the convention center. And actually it's more convenient to access the facility. Bus transportation between hotels and convention center will be provided throughout the day. Keeping in mind, special focus on the morning arrivals and late night returns to the hotel. And this service between hotel and convention center for four days are complimentary. Now switching to unique landscape, hotel landscape we have in our Lakeland. But the hotels are medium size and mostly distributed within four-to-five mile radius. And as you can see on the diagram, we have planned the cluster of hotels in each of those red circles with a Jaina block of the rooms there. This way it allows us to plan the bus routes for four days of, you know, transferring between hotels and convention center. As usual, adjoining two convention center hotels, our Jaina quota is currently full. Our recommendation is to book the room from Jaina Convention website once you register to get the Jaina rate. And of course, what is the convention without tasty meals? We have planned delicious meals throughout four days of convention, including Friday welcome lunch and Monday goodbye lunch. And also you can take a travel packs with you. Now that was about roti, travel and maqan. Let me invite our convention secretary and my right-hand team member, Vipul Shah from Chicago to showcase exciting convention activities. Vipul Bai.
Jai Janendra, Bindeesh Bai, thank you. My name is Vipul Shah. I have a distinct honor and pleasure being part of the convention board and leading press and media team as well as co-leading marketing team. I'll be sharing some exciting updates for social and entertainment programs throughout the convention. We have planned an amazing social and entertainment program for three days for all age group. Starting with NAMRajul Nurtyanatika, a musical cultural program. This is a story of twenty-second Tirithankar Bhagwan Naminath, which depicts his life events from his youth as prince, his engagement to Prince Princess Rajul, his marriage procession, the Bhavya Vargodha, his compassion towards animals and his instant change of heart resulting in his denouncing the world and taking Diksha. This is the story of Rag and Virag, eternal love and renunciation. This dance drama is an entertaining yet thought-provoking which incorporates eight dances and many drama characters. NAMRajul Nurtyanatika, a musical culture program presented by Jaina, produced by Jain Society of Metropolitan Chicago in collaboration with various songs of North America. Mantra to Moksha, when two rivers merges it's called Sangam, but the confluence of three rivers is called Prajarn. Music is confluence of three rivers, Sur, La and Tal, melody, tempo and rhythm. Dr Kumar Chaturji blends mastery in music and unflinching devotion to the Almighty, projecting a picture of immensely likeable attitude and calmness that overwhelms his personality. Sri Kumarji will take us to the journey of Moksha through the power of mantra. Kshama Veerashya Bhushanam, after a grand success of large last convention in two thousand twenty-one through presentation of Mahavir Ek Alok Ki Katha. We bring this ballet for this convention depicting the story of ten bhav lives of Sri Parshanath Bhagwan. Kshama Veerashya Bhushanam, a video presentation of captivating stories, explicit lyrics, melodious music and dance. Continuing to the evening entertainment program. As always, we will, we will have a raskarba Bollywood concert and Jain Scott talent. More details will be shared shortly on the raskarba and the Bollywood concert. Stay tuned. Jain Scott talent is an opportunity to showcase our local talents from Jaina community. If you have an artist in you, and I know you all have, you must let it come out and be recognized. Come forward and be on the center of the stage to showcase your talent. It may be singing, dancing, acting, playing instrument or even juggling. Register at jainaconvention.org. We have programming and engagement for all ages. Our young Jains will participate in Jain's Jain Connect activities and hopefully make lifelong relationships. The young Jains professional will have a chance to expand their network. The youth activities led by YJA will engage in leadership sessions such as entrepreneurship workshop. And of course, our very young will also be kept engaged throughout the convention with various activities. In next slides, I would like to share an exciting update on speakers lineup. We have amazing lineup of our speakers and dignitaries. For the keynote, we have Sri Guru Ratnaprabhu, Sri Sri Ravi Shankar and Dr Sudhir Jain. We are so blessed to have Ashiravad Vachan from Parampuja Acharya Vijay Ratnasundar Suryaswaji Maharashahab, Acharya Sri Ramand Sagarji, Acharya Sri Lokesh Munniji, Gurdev Sri Namramuniji, Acharya Sri Chandranaji, Sadvi Shilapiji. And we also have group of Shamyji conducting workshops in various topics of Jainism. We also have amazing lineup of session speakers, including Yogita Shah, Avionic Domain Lead at NASA and many more renowned Jain scholars and pundits. Now let's take a look at the registration statistics. We are very excited to share you, as of last night, we have two thousand four hundred nine registration captured, twenty-four oh nine. Closely moving towards twenty-five hundred and I'm sure by end of day today it will be reached twenty-five hundred. And hopefully by end of May, June, Makliyanak in all centers, we will reach our target of three thousand. As you can see here in various charts, of course Florida is, Florida state is leading, being the host state, followed by California, Illinois, New Jersey, Texas, Maryland and so forth. We also have a great representation from all age group, as you can see from the age of twenty-one to forty-two and younger kids, we have a great representation this time. In the next slide, we will show some breakout by the Jain centers. I am being the Chicagoan, very proud to say Jain Center of Chicago has the highest number of registration, followed by Jain Center of Florida, New Jersey, Washington and so forth. Great momentum, if you see your song and if you wanna move up the numbers, please do the needful, please spread the word, please ask your song members, your friends and family to register. Registration fees will go up after March thirty-first, so you still have some time left, few days to register at this discounted rate. We highly request you to please register. Next, I would like to invite co-chair for the fundraising team, Rajivji Pandya. Rajivji.
Thank you, Vipul Bai. Jai Janendra everyone. You've just seen the excellent overview of the twenty-twenty-three Jaina Convention that will bring together our Sadhu Sadvi's Pravachans, awesome lineup of speakers and scholar sessions, wonderful cultural evening programming, our next gen events, Jain Connect, Thirth Darshan and an unforgettable opportunity to connect with thousands of Jains across North America and so much more. The Jaina Convention brings together the entire Jain community across North America every two years. The twenty-twenty-three Jaina Convention will be in person after four years due to the pandemic. We're expecting a lot of enthusiasm for our attendees as well as potential sponsors. The Jaina Convention is only possible with the support of our community. Your families, businesses and Jain centers have an excellent opportunity to show your support, to uplift and bring together our Jain, entire Jain community. You may have recently received a beautiful twenty-four-page sponsorship brochure in the mail, summarizing the many highlights of the Jaina Convention along with all the different sponsorship opportunities and their benefits. The sponsorship brochure is also available digitally online on the Jaina Convention website with the ability to drill down to each sponsorship and take lab and accumulate good karma. You've also, we also have the great opportunity of being a Mahasanthi or Santhi for the convention. We're extremely pleased to announce that Dr Kiran Patel and family of Tampa, Florida are Mahasanthi. Kup Kup and Modra to the Patel family. We also have four opportunities to be a Santhi, one of which just has been pledged last week. Thank you for your support. The Santhi sponsorship have many benefits, the most important being your tremendous support for our community. We also have corporate sponsorship, both profit and nonprofit. Your company has an excellent opportunity to promote their product, services or mission to thousands of Jains attending the convention. A free booth and a full-page ad for profit and table and half-page ad for nonprofit sponsorship are just few of the benefits along with the ability to promote this to many of our attendees. We are proud to announce that Akshay Patra and Arant Institute have both taken a nonprofit sponsorship to showcase their mission to the Jain community. I will now hand it over to Prem Bhai to speak further on our other sponsorship opportunities. Prem Bhai.
Yeah, so I think this was supposed to be Shobhan, so I will pass it to Shobhan. Shobhan please.
Jai Janendra, Maharati Sponsor, Prem Bhai Jai Janendra. We have Maharati sponsorship and that is so, so important because you will be advertised all day. Everybody is using the bus, so it is really a great way to support Jaina, Jaina Convention and get a hundred percent advertisement for your business. And as you see on the website and on the screen right now, you have tremendous amount of benefits here. So we will really appreciate if you do Maharati sponsorship. Next one please. Right now we have one sponsor for Maharati sponsorship, so we thank you there. Okay, parade and float sponsorship. I think that is one of the best and the fun part of our Jaina Convention. Because as you come in, first day you get excited, you get registered and then next day or that day you are ready to celebrate. All your sangh gathered together, walk in front of float and when you sponsor the parade float, it's, it's actually magical moment. You are sitting there enjoying the whole convention atmosphere. I think that is the greatest way to start our convention. And your company advertisement, forget the company advertisement, your family, the Jaina spirit starts there. So remember that when you are sponsoring the parade float sponsorship, it's the Jaina convention spirit you are sponsoring. Thank you for that. Next one please. This is souvenir book. I have been chair of the souvenir book one time and what is the best way to do this? I have every year, every, not every two years when I go to Jaina Convention, we, I get the book and I keep it. Why? Not because I want to collect the garbage, but it is just dear to my heart. So many good memories for page, page advertisement. We already have a back cover advertisement with Dr Indra, Indra Wandan and Saldamini Shah. But we have back cover and the front cover. But let me show you. You as a person, even you do not have a business, how can you get the Jaina advertisement? Look at this, four friends together has advertised together, just their names or their photos and you put compliment and so if you think, oh, I don't have a business, no, 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 no. You, you are Jain and you can support us or your friends can support us together and put your advertisement. I think instead of advertisement, we should say compliment and support to Jaina and we love it. So if you really see half-page and full-page advertisement are, if you do it with the friends, it's really a fair amount. Your community at Jain Center also can come together and put advertisement or a page for supporting Jaina Convention. It is one of the wonderful ways to do it. Here it is. See the whole center come, came together and they put advertisement together. Everybody's name is there. And if you don't have your advertisement, Jaina will help you to design it. Thank you. Next one please. This is souvenir bag. I tell you, everybody says all the souvenir bag and it's a great way to advertise. Look at this, if you are, it's Jaina bag from Atlanta and some nail made had advertised here. Then there is a Jaya Travel has sponsored the bag. So people do keep it long time and your company and your sangh will benefit tremendously to put this advertisement or sponsoring the bag and the water bottle. What is the best way to conquer our earth? And if you put a bottle, if you become our souvenir bottle supporter, we will like it and people will remember you every day. So we thank you and I really want to thank you to every or anyway when you support Jaina. And any of this information you will get it in the Jaina Convention website and a sponsorship. Now let me introduce, not introduce you, let me give it back to the Bindeesh Bai. Bindeesh Bai is our convener and he will take it over from there. Thank you so much, Bindeesh.
Thank you, Jai Janendra. Now to showcase you, now it's a turn for the set of sponsorship, Swami Vatsalya Prabhavana sponsorship. These opportunities that we all have experienced and it's time for receiving Sangh Ashiravad by doing a Swami Vatsalya. Guru Bhagwans have called a sangh as a puja-nia and here is the opportunity to show our vatsalya and dedication to the sangh. This time we are so fortunate to have a chomasi chaudas during our convention. We are going to have activities for that. We'll have a pratikaman for that. So don't worry, register. You will have all the facilities to do your sadhana there. So we have a sponsorship, Sadhu Sadvi and Aradak Meal Sponsorship. This is a vayavach sponsorship opportunity. Same way, wild water and water sponsorship, you have an option to sponsor those. Another sets of sponsorships is to do prabhavana for the most important meal of the day to the sangh parivar, naukashi or breakfast. Second similar sponsorship is opportunity to take lab of serving a lunch to sakal sangh. Sponsor such great honor to invite a sangh to your convention home. All of you have done Swami Vatsalya at your local Jain center. When and where are you going to get a such opportunity to show your vatsalya to whole North America Jain family? The last one is the opportunity of benefit of inviting and hosting sakal sangh for the dinner before sunset. Swami Vatsalya meals will be prepared by professional national caterers following the Jain practices. From convention planning, this is the most important activity that keep us busy. And we want to make sure we bring the best experience for our beloved community. We really need help with this sponsorship. Ajnolahavoli jee re kal kone di teche. Now switching to next one, next important sponsorships. Thirth Darshan Temple and Arthi Mangaldivo. Now it's turn for the traditional sets of sponsorship opportunities that you have experienced. First is to showcase Jain temple to the entire Jain congregation at the convention. This is an opportunity that we dream to invite sakal sangh to the temple. Here you have unique opportunity to open the door of the temple to the sakal sangh and then invite them for the darshan, arthi, mangaldivo, many other pujans. This is a unique opportunity and we want you to take advantage of this. Switching to the second gear. Think of inviting and taking a Jain sangh on Chaitya Pari Party to Thirth Dam. For Thirth Dam, Thirth Darshan Lab, you will briefly introduce the thirth. It's important in Jain mythology and antiquity. So why it is still have, so this Thirth Dam we are trying to showcase have very important place in Jain mythology and antiquity. And it will be photographed by the professional videographers and you have seen the examples of those in the last twenty-twenty-one convention. We are continuing with that tradition and providing the three sponsorship available this time. First one is Kundalpur, second one is a, sorry.
Sankeshwar.
Sankeshwar, Sankeshwar, Parshvanath and, and Dharampur. So we have this three thirths available, one of them Kundalpur is already kind of reserved, but other two are available. We want you to take advantage of this. Now switching to the third and the traditional sponsorship opportunity to take a lavu of arthi and mangaldivo. You are invited to join hand and perform the arthi mangaldivo at convention temple. As tradition, you will dress up with traditional mugat case and perform the arthi and mangaldivo as per your tradition. We have a three tradition, arthi in the morning and in the evening. We'll have a Shetambar arthi, Digumber arthi and Shimadra Chandra arthi. And there will be a mangaldivo for all of us together, same thing for the evening. So we have many opportunities to take advantage of this lavu. With that, I will introduce our west coast youth leader and upcoming leader, Mr Yogesh Babna.
Jai Janendra, pranam everyone. Thank you, Bindeesh Bai. So far we learn about so many Jaina convention activities, lots of activities are planned. If we categorize them into three basic categories, these are religious, education and cultural. And the culture, the entertainment slide, this particular slide showcase our cultural and heritage. I would really request you all to look at this slide and all the sponsor, sponsorship opportunities. Bollywood night, maximum five, five thousand one, cultural show, drama, four thousand five hundred and one. Parshanath Nurtyanatika that Rajiv Bai earlier talked about it, three thousand five hundred and one. Rasgarba, one of the most popular event, without that none of our, our convention and our big events never finish. Three thousand five hundred and one. Jains Got Talent, two thousand five hundred and one, five maximum. So please participate and help further. Next slide. And this is about the next gen. As everywhere we go, we talk about it that we wanted to make sure that our kids goes in the best of the both world, our next generations. This is a problem, this is an issue, this is an things that, that the talk in every household. And to support that at the big forum like Jaina Convention, Jain, next gen activities is the one that it attracts a lot. So please look at this and the next gen sponsorships opportunities are Jain Connects, three thousand one, Young Jain Professional, YJP, two thousand five hundred and one, YJA, two thousand five hundred and one. See YJP and YJ both are our integral part, Jainas integral part and they do showcase so many activities during these big conventions. Please do support, this will help your kids, our kids as well. So Jain Academy Bowl, JAB, two thousand five hundred and one and Kids Club where you will free to attend rest of the activity, but on the same time kids will be learning. So that's the two thousand one each. And we also thanks to our JAB sponsors, one of five sponsors, Dr Jagdish and Madhushe. So that's the two thousand one each. And we also thanks to our JAB sponsors, one of five sponsors, Dr Jagdish and Madhushrit. Thank you. And with that said, I would like to invite next presenter, Raju By Pandya.
Thank you Yogeshwari. One of the most wonderful experiences in going to a Jaina convention. Is the spiritual enlightenment, education and knowledge. That is available by being with and listening to our Sadhu Sadvi Pravachans. Eminence keynote speakers or one of the numerous sessions speakers and scholars. Speaking on different topics in improving our lives and maximizing our human potential the Jain way. As mentioned earlier, we have three keynote speakers, over ten Sadhu Sadvi Pravachans and nearly thirty session speakers and scholars. Your family has a unique opportunity to personally introduce the Sadhu Sadvi Pravachan or the speakers, scholars on the stage. We're proud to say that all our nonprofit and nonprofit booths and tables have been taken. This is over thirty-two booths and tables. It shows the tremendous potential of showcasing your product or service. To the thousands of Jains attending the Jaina Convention. We have a few booths and tables left for those that take a corporate sponsorship and promote their company or services. To our Jain attendees, over three thousand. Next sponsorship opportunities are available on the Jaina Convention website. Along with the ability to drill down to each sponsorship and take lob. You'll be able to see what each sponsorships are still available. All the benefits associated with the sponsorship and the ability to pledge or reserve the sponsorship and pay by credit card or cheque. We have made it very simple to show your support, take lob and accumulate good karma. Thank you. I will now hand it over to Nitin By.
Jay Janendra, everybody. So far, thank you very much for joining on this Saturday morning for. West Coast and afternoon for East Coast and Midwest people. You have heard. Why you should attend? Or are you not convinced yet? Let me give you reasons why and how you can help the cause of Jaina Convention. As you heard, first time, we are meeting after four years. So we need your support from every single person and how can you support? One, come. That's probably the most important way. Tell your friends, family and register yourself. Bring friends and family. And why would you all come there? Besides convention, besides learning, besides the education, messages from our gurus. Socialize, build connections and support the cause. What is the cause we are supporting? We are supporting Jaina, the organization that we all should be proud of. It has grown so much by now. And we all should know and realize that. Convention is the main activity which not only gets us all together. But also helps raise funds that is utilized for the functioning of Jaina for next two years. And of course, if you have a next slide, put it up. If not, that's good. Sappan. So what does Jaina do? You see their newsletters, you see their website, you see lots of activities by forty plus committees. If I just name you few. Vayavach Committee, Sardarmic Committee, Longage Planning, Academic Committee. Jaina Awards, all committees do need some kind of help. And ladies and gentlemen, every dollar you give will be used appropriately. Beyond convention for the functioning of Jaina for the next two years. And as you heard. How can you support besides coming and encouraging by helping us with funds? You can go anywhere from five hundred and one dollars for a quarter page ad to all the way to Sanpati level. It is not how much you give. It is a matter of. You participate, you join and your dollar is going to stretch. The functioning of not only this convention, but also Jaina for the next two years. And the fact remains that Jains have reached. The highest earning minority in North America as well as India. Now, how did we get there? With the help of all other community, all other people that we work with, we business with, etc. Ladies and gentlemen, here is an opportunity to help Jaina to spread the message. That so many committees are working on, not only to Jains of course, but to all others. With that, a humble appeal to all to contribute in any which way, starting from registration, attending. And then of course, spreading message and giving funds. Jay Janendra. Thank you.
Thank you, Nitin Uncle. Like we mentioned, Jaina, we really encourage you to register for the Jaina Convention. Our prices do increase at the end of this month, so we highly encourage you to take advantage of this opportunity as much as possible. And with that, I'm going to open the floor to any questions that you may have. I ask that you please raise your hand in the chat or, or post your questions in the chat and we will be sure to answer them as well. A couple of questions that came up in the last session that I want to just address before I take any new questions. If you have any food allergies or any sort of restrictions on, on food, please email the food committee. Their contact information can be found on the convention website and please email them sooner than later so that we can make sure that you are taken care of. Also on the note of food, if you are vegan, we will have plenty of vegan options available at the convention. So please do not worry, there will be food and you will be covered regardless of, of what dietary restrictions you may have. Another note is. Jaina Convention is only made possible by numerous support of volunteers as Bindeshwari Uncle mentioned at the beginning. If you're interested volunteering at the convention, please go to the convention website and fill out the volunteer interest form and our committees will reach out to you. Again, we request that you do that sooner than later so that we can, we can start planning around what help that we do have. With that being said, I'll ask you to post any questions that you may have in the chat or raise your hand. One question in the chat was, can we reserve rooms with the convention discounted rates ahead of the convention? And to that, you should be able to, you can reach out to the hotel and they should be able to accommodate that. If for whatever reason you have any issues with that, please reach out to our hotels and logistics committee and they will help get you taken care of in that regard. There is a question on arrangement for travel from the airport to the convention and back. Bindeshwari, if you want to address that one.
Sure. Thank you. So yes, we have made an arrangement, multiple options available. So go to jainaconvention.org website and look into. Look into about section, there is a transportation page, it explains you all the options you have from airport to Lakeland and back. So pick the options which fits your need and your family's need. And depending on your timing, just make sure that you have the service available. So just look at that, we have made a best, you know, you know, arrangement. For people to travel from airport to, you know, Lakeland and back.
One other note also as our transportation committee is planning. How all the, all the bus and travel logistics will be done, we posted a link to a survey in the chat. Please go ahead and fill out that survey so that we can better prepare the logistics around transportation. There is another question in the chat regarding speakers during the convention. If you want to address that, Bindeshwari.
Yes, so that I already put it. It's completely incorrect information. If somebody has mentioned that. They have probably provided you incorrect information. We do not charge any speakers. We actually spend money on the speakers to get them over there. Jaina does not pay any speakers any fees. Because it is a platform that they are achieving, they are, you know, getting to spread the, you know, message and also enlighten the community. So again, if you have received that kind of information, it's incorrect. Jaina never charged any speaker to speak at Jaina Convention. That's just simple answer to that.
May I add, Bindeshwari?
Yes, please.
Person who asked and others may be wondering why there is sponsorship of speakers and the objective here is. One other way to raise funds for convention and Jaina. And of course, give Jains an opportunity or Jains and others an opportunity to recognize your beloved speaker, etc. So, but that has nothing to do with the cost of the speaker or anything else that is charged, etc.
Yeah, absolutely. I think Nitin By, thank you for clarifying it. Maybe that was the context. So this is just a token that we create a sponsorship opportunity for people to participate. Because otherwise, if we have to do it, we have to put everything under Swami Vatsalya because that is the biggest expense. But we want to make sure we give people a different opportunities to sponsor. But those are token sponsorship that basically supports the whole convention. The hope that clarifies it.
Thank you for that. Do we have any other questions? Please go ahead and post them in the chat or raise your hand on Zoom and we will be sure to answer them. I received a question regarding if sightseeing packages will be offered after the convention? Or do we have any sort of tour packages that we offer?
If there is interest, we could work with the travel agencies to see if they can provide. And yes, we have a good context with the local travel agencies. That if there is an interest, we can actually provide their contact information. They should be able to do it. And we have seen multiple cases, they have been able to do it. So from Jaina, if you have a package, no, but we can guide you to the proper. Opportunities for to do the pre or post your vacation planning. If that answers the question.
You can reach out, you can email convener@jaina.org and we will be sure to get you that information.
Yes.
Okay, I see. Shilpa has her hand raised. If you want to go ahead and unmute and ask your question.
Hi, Jay Janendra to everyone. So Jaina is doing really nice. I've been attending Jaina. Events in the last one and a half decades on and off. And I just had wanted to add, I know the Jain community is doing really well. Most of the Jains are doing great in their careers or lives or financially. But it's not the case with hundred percent Jain community, there's always. And including me, I have seen lot of other Jains who don't come up front to say, but despite having. All good credentials, they are having difficult times well in careers or other ways or supports. So is Jaina community having a careers committee or if it can be developed? It's not that what is in the market or the youngsters, but when people are going down the curve after fifty. What happens to them if they don't have their bigger circle of kids or grandkids to support them? And to still be stable financially. So the times of the Jains are doing very well everywhere. It is not the case whether it is US or Canada or India or other countries. I myself have been reaching out to Jain community for years. I've had very bad and good ups and downs of careers. People are established at high levels, but it is very difficult for them to help MBA or PhD get a job, but it's not only me. I have met lot of people like me. I say, can you reach out or we can have a careers committee? But they don't want to show a bad face in community. Ki they are struggling or something like that or family me problem hai to the little. I won't say fake face, but they just want to show the happy face, good face and they don't reach out and the. Problem areas are hidden or masked. So if there could be a committee where those kind of section of people, ten, twenty percent, I don't know how much it is. It can come up and the well efficient percentage of eighty percent or whatever balance can help them out to. You know, reach or stabilize like other communities do like. I example whatever Punjabis or Babhs or everybody in their communities are doing. But that portion is little bit, I find it lacking.
Thank you, Shilpaji. I think you very nicely explained. Arishwari, this is more like a Jaina, at Jaina level kind of a question. Do you have any feedback on that one?
Has matrimonial events, speakers, everything, we could have a careers section also or a difficult time section. If at all needed. I know a psychologist or psychiatrist came two, three years back. And he is an oncologist in India, but he was dealing with the relationship thing for the youth matrimonial event. So similar, something like this could be made as a Jaina section in a proper way, not like the way I said. But which could align with Jaina's mission.
So I will speak before, I know Bindeshwari Uncle mentioned the Jaina side of it. And it is more of a Jaina initiative. At the convention specifically, there actually are, is going to be a networking group. And networking event for professionals to interact with one another. Both for those in their, in their, through the young Jain professionals and also for adults as well. So more details about that will be coming out soon.
Absolutely. But in the meanwhile, for the matrimonial, please go to jainconnect.net.
Oh, no, no, I'm not interested in matrimonial. I'm forty-nine, fifty. I'm just saying that a doctor, oncologist from India had come and he was. Having a specific session to deal with relationship thing. So that is a personal psychological. So similar for careers, we could have similar for other things, the problem areas.
Sure, sure. We'll, we'll definitely, you know, connect on that thing too. And if you can reach out to me, I, all the information is there on jaina.org. So please connect with us and we can definitely move forward and, you know, do more things on this subject.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for that. We had one question in the chat regarding. Transportation from the airports. So we are providing transportation from both the Orlando and the Tampa airports. This is why we request you to please fill out the survey so we can plan the logistics around both of those accordingly. So yes, we will be covering both of those airports. Let's see if any other questions. I know we're also nearing an hour on this, so I want to be cognizant of everyone's time. I want to, sorry, go ahead, Nitin Uncle.
Sappan, yeah, I will ask one question. Like in two thousand nineteen, do people have to register to attend a particular session? Or it's going to be open first come, first served this time?
I think, Nitin By, I think we have a good enough capacity now with every room. Especially for the adult side, the smallest room we have is a two hundred and fifty capacity. And we have like a three, two fifty capacity rooms, two with the five hundred capacity and. Two with more than two thousand capacity. So we are thinking we may not have to go to that mechanism. To restrict and we will actually put with from our experience and the feedback that some of the. Speakers and scholars invite, you know, a lot more attendees. So we will put them into, into the larger venue to begin with, to manage it.
Thank you. I just wanted the audience to know that you don't have to worry or you don't have to rush. There will be enough room for all speakers facility. Thank you.
Absolutely. Every Jaina convention is a, is a learning experience for us and we take our past experiences to improve on. So it's good to hear that. Yep, we will definitely accommodate everyone in every session as, as, as we can. I think with that being said, if there are no further questions, we're going to go ahead and close out today's session. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points that we went over today. First and foremost, please support Jaina and the Jaina Convention in whatever way that you can. Whether that's spreading the word to your family and friends, registering for the convention itself. Or sponsoring a session, sponsoring an event, any kind of sponsorship you can do. And if you're not in a position to sponsor something, smaller donations are also welcome on the convention website. And if you can't monetarily sponsor or donate, please donate your time. We need volunteers to make everything possible. So go ahead onto the convention website and you can get more information about all of those. And with that, if you have any more questions after this meeting ends, you can. And with that, if you have any more questions after this meeting ends, you can always email convener@jain.org or support@jainconvention.org and we will be sure to get back to you with the answers to any questions you have. Thank you and Jay Janendra, everybody. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone, for taking time to attend the convention town hall. Thank you.